I call the meeting to order. At some point I'll get used to this. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Do we have anybody here for public comment? Seeing none, we will revisit that issue at the end of the meeting. Mrs. Heath, would you like to come up and talk to us about the Unified Team? That's great. Yes. Yep.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come in tonight and talk to you about our new Unified Sports Program at Hampton Academy. It's been a great success and I'm really excited to share our experience with you tonight. I have made a pamphlet for you. I have a lot of testimonials from parents and from staff members and from students and I just wanted to, I made a small packet, I wanted to share some of them with you. And I think that that really conveys the overall message of how this program went for us.
Thank you.
I'm just going to tell you a little bit about Unified Sports and what this program is all about and then I would like to have the students tell you about their experience and then I have a little video for you. So Unified is a competitive developmental program for students with a variety of skill levels. Unified Sports joins people with and without intellectual disabilities on the same team. It was inspired by a simple principle. Training together and playing together is a quick path to friendship and understanding. Last year, Dr. De Silva Napkin and Zach Lewis, our athletic director, approached me and asked me my thoughts on starting a Unified Program at Hampton Academy. I have to be transparent and honest. I've never played basketball. I've never coached basketball. So I thought about it and I thought, what a great opportunity this could be for students, all students, not just one population, but the whole, every student in the whole school. So I started thinking about it and I started researching what Unified is and I came to realize what a great opportunity this would be for our students here at Hampton Academy. At first, the students were not buying in very well to it. I think that, you know, some of them had never heard of it and they couldn't quite grasp what the concept was. So I told them, I'm going to be completely honest with you. I've never coached. I've never played. I need help. So that brought quite a few students onboard. We ended up with 38 students on the team. We had a variety of mentors and players. The students worked so well together. One thing I do want to convey is once the students understood what this was about, they showed up every single week and they really, really had the best interest and they showed up for the right reasons. I coached this team with Mr. Planette, our BCBA, and together we started researching what we could do, right, to put together this program to make it the best for all students. So once we had a good idea of what Unified was, and after we had started talking to the students about it and, you know, got some of them onboard, we got our Unified Coaching Certification. That was our first step. And then we called some kids together and we said, we need help. We need to spread it throughout the school. It literally spread like wildfire. When we had our first meeting to collect paperwork and to tell the kids, you know, what our practice schedule would be, we had over 48 kids, I think, show up. Yeah. A lot of them had other commitments, so, you know, sometimes they would show, sometimes they wouldn't, but overall, every week, at least 38 students showed up to play with us. So Unified Sport Teams are made up of people of similar ages and abilities. I'm pretty sure there's only two Unified Sports Teams at the middle school level in the state of New Hampshire. I can't find any other. The second one besides Hampton Academy is at Cooperative Middle School in Stratum. So if we continue with this program, which I hope we really, really do, they would be the team that we would play. They would, you know, hopefully come here and we would be able to get a couple of games there. Since most high schools do offer Unified Sports, I think it's a really good idea, opportunity for students at the middle school level to be able to, you know, learn from their peers, get some skills, right, and be able to be a part of a team once they join, you know, once they get to high school. A lot of these kids have never had an opportunity to be on a team. They're, you know, for various reasons. So this gave them an opportunity not only to work and learn with their peers, but also to gain skills to be a part of a team where otherwise they may never have been able to get this opportunity. So during the season, we had a six-week season. We had one scheduled practice a week where the students were paired with a mentor, student who helped them learn, you know, learn the skills and learn what teamwork and cooperation and working together is all about. I'm going to, I have two students here with me today who would like to tell you a little bit about their experience and then I have a video to, I'd like to show you.
Hello. I am Mark Howard. And I did great in Unified Basketball. I say, the very first real game, well, we tied, but we did great. I scored buckets, told some students what to do and they, and me and the students were passing a lot. We got the advantage and it was so fun. I was like thumbs up, you know? That's what I do. I'm very friendly in Unified Basketball. Well, I was sad at first, but now I'm not. Unified Basketball was less rough than I thought it would be. Yep. So I was getting the hang of it and I was real good at it. Three weeks for training and two weeks for, for sort of real games and then the real game. So that's three, two, one. I like that pattern. So yeah, six Thursdays. So it was more than a month or maybe two months during two months. So. So, thank you for joining. Bye-bye.
I have to say that Mark did not want to play on the team. The very first day, he literally came to my desk every half hour of the day and said, please, Mrs. Heath, don't make me play, please. I said, Mark, we're going to do it and we're going to do it together. It was hard to get him off the bench the very first day, but within 10 minutes, when he got that first basket, it was all over for him. He ended up being a superstar. Thank you, Mark.
Good job. Bye.
I'm Paila Valhulian. I'm a sixth grader here at Hampton Academy. I was one of the players who helped out at the Unified Basketball Team and it was a really great experience for everybody who was able to play. For the kids who, like, have never played basketball before, it was like a chance to see if they liked it and see if they wanted to try out for the actual team. And kids who weren't able to make the actual team of basketball got to see how it was performed by other players and got to learn the game. It was, it was a lot of fun during, like, the games and everything because the mentors got the pass to the kids and they got to score all the baskets and it was nice to see them all happy and being able to play a sport that they've never tried before.
I think everybody wants to say how proud we are of everybody who was on the team and of Mrs. Heath for trying something new, right?
Thank you. I have to say, it's, after our last game, I have never felt like I felt that day. I walked out of here and I felt like I was floating on air and I honestly say, if I don't do anything better for the rest of my life, it will be one of the best things that I've ever done, honestly. We did make a jam board. I've shared that with you. This is just, the students created sticky notes and put them together through technology to convey their thoughts on how they felt about the experience. I've included in the packet, I'm going to skip over it because I don't want to take up more of your time, but I've included just some testimonials from parents, like I said. I do want to end this, that by saying, I'm going to let, I'll show the video to you, but I do want to end it by saying that yesterday, we all experienced a unified connection to nature. Thank you for the glasses. Parents were really, really grateful and thank you. I got quite a few thank you notes for that today. The Unified Sports Program at Hampton Academy is a unified connection to developing tolerance, acceptance, and a way to help all children see the world from a different perspective. Thank you.
We had a chance to talk to some of our students about their experience with our Unified Basketball League. Take a look.
My favorite part of the Unified Basketball was the sportsmanship.
My favorite part of the Unified Basketball Team is playing with my friends and helping people out.
I kind of liked helping the team.
My favorite part about the Unified Basketball Games were getting to know everyone and playing with my friends.
My favorite part about Unified Basketball was, is helping out my friends, scoring some buckets, and playing with my friends.
I like to help others learn how to play basketball during the games and practice.
I liked blocking and defending.
I liked making new friends.
I liked helping people who didn't know how to play and I'm excited to see what we do next year.
The other thing that we planned to do tonight from the middle school was introduce the winners of the oratorical contest. Unfortunately, we had a track meet and I don't, I don't think they're back from the track meet yet. We also have 150 kids on the track team, so. But in recognition of the top three, Emily Arlington came in first place with her speech on "No is a Complete Sentence." Second place was Xavier LaPierre, "The Benefits of Wit and Sarcasm." Third place was Chase Granelli and "Is Fear the Future Normal?" So they're actually heading up to Concord tomorrow with Ms. Clark and Mr. Doherty to present at...
The Innovations Conference for New Hampshire School Administratives Association. One of the things that we've been doing is superintendences, talking about some of the innovative programs that we have in our schools. And two that were cited and recommended were Shark News and our oratoricals. So both of those groups will be going up and presenting to educators and aspiring leaders to talk about these two great programs. So, good stuff.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, school board member updates. Does anybody have anything they want to share? Les, you got anything? The only thing that I will throw out there is that registrations are almost full for Tuck Camp with the Parks and Rec Department, so if you are interested in sending your kid this summer, you better get on the stick and get them registered. They do have just a couple of spots left, but not very many. And for the PTA, you guys probably saw this in Dr. Costa's letter last week, but we are going to keep saying it. The PTA needs help. They need volunteers to fill executive positions. We need president, vice president, treasurer. They have done such a good job at fundraising this year that they have an excessive amount of money in their budget this year. But in order to retain those funds and be able to use them for Hampton Schools, we need to fill those positions. There actually is something, there is basically a rule from the state PTA that if you cannot fill your executive positions, that the money reverts back to the state. So if you could talk to Jen McClellan, talk to Wendy Lewis, talk to any of the other current volunteers, let them know that you're interested, that would be great.
And minimally, they need a president and a treasurer. I do know those are the two, those are the two key positions, that the PTA cannot exist without those two critical positions.
Mr. Lanning, you ready for your report?
Good evening, everyone. Just, Mrs. Hayward and I are fresh off our Kindergarten Information Night and I want to let the public know if you could not make Kindergarten Information Night, that's okay. The registration process begins today, so you can come to Center School anytime between 8 o'clock and 3:30, Monday through Friday, and pick up a registration packet and my administrative assistants in the front office will help guide you through setting up a registration appointment and filling out the packet. We have three screening dates, registration dates in May, and we also will have a late registration sometime in June. So the process has begun. It was well-attended tonight, about 65 student packets were handed out, which is great for a first night. We, it's just the, it's like opening night, just like the Red, did the Red Sox win today? Oh, that's too bad. That's a long story. We don't want to get into that. Okay. So it's opening night for Center School as far as kindergarten registration, so it's not too late to get started in the process and we're looking forward to keeping you updated on those numbers. I know you like to have those numbers, so each month I will be giving you updates on how we're doing for registration numbers through June. After June, it'll be up to somebody else to do that. April is a very, very busy month with kindergarten registration and literacy initiatives. We have our Celebration of Learning next week. We like to do that right before April vacation, so we get the parents coming in to have a nice celebration. It's a culminating event of our One School, One Book program, as well as our book fair, as well as an opportunity to see all of the great things that went on in the classroom throughout the school year. So we have that information that's been sent to parents and we're going to resend it again this week. So that's April, next Wednesday. We also have an author visit coming sometime in April as well. The author of our One School, One Book, Hattie and Fenway and Hattie, so we're excited to bring in Ms. Coe to join us at Center School. We have some after-school activities that continue to happen at Center School. Conferences went extremely well, they were very well-attended, so that went well. And I believe that's it. Do you have any questions for me? Thank you all. Have a great night.
Thank you. Come on up.
Hello, Ms. Zapp.
Hi, everyone. Hello. Just a few updates from Marston School. Parents that are watching or listening, caring adults, placement letters will be due at the end of the week, so just a very friendly reminder, we'll send out another email reminder probably tomorrow, midweek, but just a reminder that those will be due and they're super helpful when we start placement in May. Other than that, we're just kind of working through transition with Hampton Academy and Center School, you know, getting ready for our 2-3 events and our 5-6 events and more information will be coming out probably from all three schools about everything coming up, so just be on a watchful eye for that. And just a lot of great stuff happening, you know, third grade's having their wax museum last week and this week. WMUR is going to come over and visit with a meteorologist for the third graders. Fourth grade will take their trip to the Boston Museum of Science and, you know, it's just gearing up for all the great activities that are going to take place in May. And I thought the eclipse went really well yesterday from Marston's point of view. The glasses were awesome that we were able to obtain for all the students, so it just gave everyone a kind of an opportunity to experience something like that and it was great overall. But other than that, you know, we're just plugging along, having a great year. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hawkins?
I'd like to keep talking about the Unified Sports Team and how wonderful it was, but I think Ms. Heath gave you a great presentation on that. Our sports teams right now, we have 150 kids in track. We got 18, I think, in baseball and probably around 12 to 15 kids in softball. So we're doing a lot. So it, it's just, it's just wonderful to see how much we do in the classroom and then also outside of the classroom. This week, aside from the other things that I wrote down, we have our Step Up Day. So our eighth graders are going over on Thursday to go visit Winnicott High School with other students that they'll be attending from, you know, North Hampton, Hampton Falls, and Seabrook. This Friday, we're going to be having a mixer, so all the students will be going over to the high school to go to a dance. I recently returned from Puerto Rico and it was a wonderful trip. While we were getting ready to get off the plane, some of the girls were talking to each other and reminding them each other that they needed to get a new dress to go to the dance on Friday, so. The Quebec trip leaves on Friday morning at 5:30-ish. We have about 22 students who are going up and they'll be there until, I think they usually get back around 11:30 at night on Sunday. We have 92 students signed up for Washington DC and that's going to be the 14th through the 17th, so we're looking forward to that. It was great to have the third grade come over and meet with our eighth grade students and teachers and talk to them about, because they're doing the weather unit, and so they introduced the weather station that we have here and talked a little bit about that. So we had the play that went extremely well. And the last thing is, we had discussed the, Canterbury Lake finally put their times and dates out. They do open at nine. What we're trying to do right now is, we just found the dates out. The busing is the number one thing that we're trying to nail down now, because if we can leave early enough from here, we'd like to be in the parking lot at 8:45, so they can be the first ones through the door. So we're in touch with the bus company, but we may need to reach out to another company to see if they have any spare buses, so.
What day are you looking at for that? Do you have a date for?
Right now, we were looking at the, that last full week, so that last day is the seventh. And since we had the snow day, it'll probably push our field day into the next week, so we need to, and that was the other thing, is I'm going to wait to nail down a date until after the school board meeting, so.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Dr. De Silva Napkin isn't here. Amber, come on up.
Hello. So our department's always busy between recording things for Channel 8, the Spelling Bee, the GOB, the oratoricals, the school plays. Mr. G is continuing to work with students on podcasting. We've also, I know it sounds weird, but we've already started planning for next year. There is a lot that goes into getting things ready for the next school year, so Tim Smith, our data person, has already started the process of rolling everything over for a new school year, finishing up end-of-year reports, working on try-to-report cards, changing report cards and grading scales for next year. We've also been just working on purchasing new Chromebooks for Hampton Academy. It's their cycle, so we've got bids out right now for that. I will be meeting with the building principals. We've started to talk about subscriptions for next year, what the needs and wants and wishes are, and then just ongoing responding to Go Guardian, preparing Chromebooks, you know, all the daily things that we do in our office, so. And we just upgraded security cameras at Center School. So, that's it. Thanks.
Mr. Lussard? Would you care to join us?
Good evening, everyone. It's always a pleasure. First, I'd like to thank my staff for all the hard work they've been putting in and I also want to welcome one of our new custodians at Marston, Drew Donovan. So everybody is pleased to have a full team at Marston. We're working there. This is probably the appropriate time to invite applicants for our summer hire program. We're looking for several summer hires to help with the year-round staff. I will go over a list of our summer projects. I'm sure Mariah's going to bring some of this up later in the meeting, but why not get underway? We have our RFPs out. We had our opening today for the preschool at Center proposals. We'll be reviewing those and going over those with Jamie and the preschool teachers to make sure that our RFP was really written to encourage creativity for an adaptive playground. So we're actually looking for someone that's in the budget area that will have the most adaptive and creative playground for the preschool. We have our bids in for the previously unidentified asbestos materials, building materials at Center School and we are moving forward with the low bid on that, the lowest qualified bidder. We also started working on the lighting program. We also started working on the lighting program and the LED upgrades at the same time for Center School. So when they remove, they have to drop the, drop ceilings and go up above that, way up above that, remove materials. And then we're reinstalling a ceiling and then we might as well upgrade the lights at the same time, which is part of our ongoing program. We got our bids for the SAU entrance at Marston for the security at the SAU, and we plan on moving ahead there with the lowest bid on that project. Marston School boiler bid is due next Tuesday, and we'll be working on the replacement boiler at Marston School and also improving the indoor air quality there with a few dehumidification machines throughout the building. We are working with the architect for the Center School window project as well. We've engaged the services of, I hate when this happens, because I'm working with so many different ones, but anyways, it'll come back to me. We're getting ready for our spring cleanup, and that will happen over April vacation. And we have some, we had a lawn bid. So it looks like we'll be working with same folks we've worked with in the past. We are also preparing for ended-school, extended school year programs here at Hampton Academy, because the first month that, is it okay to say the new principal's name at Center? Mark will be over there and that building's kind of beginning to be, our welcome to him as the building's closed for a month, but I'm sure he'll be, we'll find a place for him to be housed. And I think Jamie plans on being over here extended school days. So we'll make all the accommodations. Anyway, so we have a pretty busy summer lined up. And if you folks have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer any, unless I don't know the answers.
I think we're all set. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Ms. Borg, come on up.
Nothing, we're just busy with getting ready for field days, field trips. That means lots of bagged lunches, so that's what our staff is gearing up to, trying to collect some debt. Last month was National School Breakfast Week, so that was kind of cool. We got our picture in the US state newsletter. It's kind of cool. That's about it. Any questions for me? Well, right now, our debt's about $5,000, so it's in and out and in and out. So I'm trying to get the big, trying to get it all collected. I'm sending letters home, snail mail also. Email, snail mail. Yeah, I think text, calls.
I was going to say calls.
Calls too. Calls I do.
Calls always used to get me, just so you know.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Oh, Mary calls. I've got to take care of that.
Yes, so, yeah. So just flick it away. Anything else?
I have a question, and I don't know if it's actually for you or if it is for Mariah. The April menu was in our packet.
Yes.
And last month, we talked about alternate meals. If I remember correctly, I thought, sorry to put you on the spot, I thought you said that we were not doing alternate meals for negative balances. I thought we discussed that at the last meeting. And this month's menu specifically says negative minus $75 may result in an alternate meal.
May.
May, right. So, just checking.
Our policy, our policy states that we, if they are a set negative amount, that we don't do alternate meals.
But we do or we do not?
We don't.
Oh, so.
So my mistake.
Okay. So we should take it off the menu. That's all.
Take it off.
Thank you.
You got it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
In an alternate meal, and there's nobody that's answering the call to pay, how do we propose to get the $5,000? Sorry, Nick.
No, I'm just asking, I guess it's oratorical. If we can't do alternate meals, people are not answering calls or answering letters, emails, whatever. How are we going to get the $5,000 without somebody who's already doing it every day anyway and feels they've got it and away with it this far? They're not going to move forward. What are we going to do?
So how does the alternate meal work? So explain the thoughts, the thought process.
I don't like alternate meals. The pork kid gets a cheese sandwich or whatever.
Well, no, it's not an alternate meal. They should be able to get the meal. It's like the extra slice of.
So what we were, so we've got.
That says alternate.
On the menu, we had two. So we've got two levels essentially on the menu.
Right.
Which says if they are 35 over, they don't get extra, but if they're 75 over, they get an alternate meal.
Alternate meal.
So we're sort of discussing whether we should do the 75 alternate meal. Jenny was making points about it.
Yeah, I mean, my question is, how are these people? If we don't, if we're not doing alternate meals, which I don't particularly care for, people are not answering their emails, their letters, their snail mails, calls, whatever, they don't answer. And so far, we have $5,000. How are we going to collect that? Or are we just, you know, what are we going to do?
My objection to it is that we're not collecting from the kids. Is that the kids are the ones who get the alternate meals. They can't do anything about it. They can go home and complain. They can say, "I was embarrassed." They can say, "I didn't get enough for lunch," but they can't pay their balance.
Right.
That's my objection to the alternate meals.
Yeah, mine.
I mean, I think, Mariah, if I'm not mistaken, I think we can.
I'm trying to find the policy. We just had it updated for meal charging.
What does Frank Edelbert have to say about this? I think this needs to go to the Secretary of Education. I think he needs to be held accountable. The buck stops with him, and I think he needs to be held accountable if we can't collect this money. So I would say somebody, anybody, I'll do it if you need me to, should either call and/or write him a letter and say, "What are you going to do about it?"
I think that's a great idea. Do you want to make that a motion?
Yes, I'll make that a motion, that we contact in either writing and/or phone call. We can start with a phone call. Go to writing, the Secretary of Education, Frank Edelbert, and ask him what he suggests that we do.
He's going to put it back on local control, is my guess. I mean, I'm not trying to, I'm just going to say you certainly would not, I would encourage that conversation and dialogue, but I think that that is what they would say. They said it would fall back on local control based on the state of New Hampshire in the sense that that's really what New Hampshire is all about.
I don't mind beating that dead horse. I'll call.
No, I mean, you're all, you're welcome to it. We all can call.
I'd be happy to call him and have that conversation.
And then the next. I mean, I welcome that. I'm just, if you're looking.
And then the next phone calls.
I don't mind doing it.
Then the next phone calls need to go to represent state reps.
Yep.
I think that's a better, personally, yes.
Well, I think it should go to both.
Yeah. Do we directly, so we get state money.
We've talked about this at the legislative sessions.
Yes.
With SAU 21. This is not a new conversation. It is a conversations that we've had with our legislators. Unfortunately, there has been not a lot of traction and conquered for this. The money is available. They are choosing not to use the money in this way, as opposed to states that are to our north and to our south who do decide to use the money to pay for lunches for children. I'm talking about my neighbors in Vermont, Maine, and Massachusetts. But New Hampshire has made the decision not to.
So do we also need to talk to Governor Sununu?
I think that we could, we could speak to whoever we wish to, but it's really, I would go to our legislators, our representatives, our senators. But I think it's, I think it's important that they do hear how this is impacting communities, right? I think it's not a bad idea. They are hearing it, just so you know.
There has been legislation proposed several times over the last few years to increase the free and reduced level to 350%, I want to say. And it gets shut down while it's in the legislature. We have a very narrow margin, and right now, most of the votes we are seeing are absolutely going along party lines. So just.
Makes it very challenging for our children in New Hampshire.
Yes, it does.
But it's something that the New Hampshire school administrators have been concerned about, the New Hampshire School Boards Association is concerned about. There are many of us that are very concerned about this.
Yes.
Myself included.
Yes, myself included. So I'll make those phone calls tomorrow again. Keep on them, because you're right, when I get them. It's a little easier. Thank you.
You're good. No, I was just going to, so we had, we did have a motion, actually. Do we want to?
Sounds like two people are going to call, and I think that that's really great. I think the more voices they hear from, and we will continue to advocate at our level as well as with our legislators. And I know that people know how we feel, is my guess, because we made it pretty clear.
So I'll take back the motion, but I intend to, and Jenny, if you would do that, then I think that's a start. That's a start.
Thank you.
Dr. Costa?
So I, just a couple of things on my report yesterday, just to reiterate, was a great day in terms of we were able to provide all of our students and staff with the solar glasses. And we had some viewing parties at, in the Marston Circle. It was great to see so many, you know, teachers that were there and staff members that came out to view the solar eclipse. We had a beautiful view, and I know that there were many children that actually were able to go with families, and many went to the beach, and I know there was a viewing there as well. So this was just a nice way to bring people together in light of this spectacular event, right? The solar eclipse. So that was wonderful. As you know, last Thursday was our snow day, so we have some decisions to make in terms of what we would like to do with that. I've given you a calendar to take a peek at, to make a decision. As we know, our children do go 182 days, which is fantastic for our children, which is two days over the required days. So you have the option of changing it, leaving it, whichever you choose. But I know parents are very anxious to know when the last day of school is so that they can plan for camps and whatnot, so.
I would make a motion that we don't change it. We leave it as we voted on it last month.
Do we even, do we even need a motion if we're leaving it alone?
No, just, I think it's worth a conversation that.
All right, then, rather than a motion, how about an announcement that we're not changing it, because a lot of people get their information, and that eighth-grade graduation would be?
June 11th.
June 11th.
Which is a Tuesday night, pushing our board meeting back to June 18th.
Yeah. And the last day of school, and I believe it, we decided it was a half-day.
Yep.
Is?
June 12th.
June 12th.
Wednesday, June 12th.
Okay, and I'm not sure how that affects staff, but you can work that out.
It doesn't change.
As long as the public knows.
It does, because they have to go the 188 days per their CBA, so that's going to push them to June 14th, which is a Friday, and we'll just, it'll give them the extra time that we'll need for that wrap-up, transitional meetings. So it's actually, it's a, I don't want to say it's a good thing, but it is a good thing, because it does give us that needed time for closure.
So just to clarify for parents. The 11th, Tuesday night, eighth-grade graduation. The 12th, it's a half-day, and that's the final day for kids at Center, Marston, and the Academy.
Thank you, and I'll put that in my newsletter this Friday as well. Thank you very much. So just kind of looking at my board report, just a couple of things to highlight. Unfortunately, because of the snow day on April 3rd, we did not have our unification training, so that has been postponed. I'm waiting to hear from SAU 16, and I'll be seeing everybody on Thursday. I'm sure they'll have updated information to know when we'll be doing that. There's a few other things. You'll notice we're looking forward to getting together with our second round table to look at those legislative issues that, after crossover, to see where they all have landed and where we want to focus our attention and efforts. I know that I will be hearing from, I am sure, Meredith Nado very shortly this week.
Lois, if I could just interrupt and just say, that is a great opportunity if you would like to talk to our legislators. Most of them go. Typically, we've had Tracy Emmerich, but Mike Edgar almost always goes. We see Deborah Altshiller, we see Chris Muns. They are almost always there, so it's a great opportunity to talk to them about what you, what we all think should be priorities going forward related to education.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And a difference to House Ed, Kathy Balboni. Am I getting it correctly? Yeah, yeah. So she's there from House Ed, and she is our representative for the area. So she's somebody that we really want to, we want to get her ear if we can. So moving on, you see that our SROs continue to work with our staff on those safety drills, which are important to all of us. You can see that we have another event, parent event, coming up, parent, as part of our partnership project on April 18th at Marston School from 6:00 to 7:30. And we are looking at working with parents to help them build guidelines, routines, and strategies during after-school and before-school. So as part of that evening, which again is at Marston School, April 18th from 6:00 to 7:30, the attendees will receive a free transition toolkit. Daycare is provided for all families, and there is also pizza dinner that's provided. We had a pretty good turnout last time. We're hoping for a great turnout again this evening, this coming Thursday. It's a week from Thursday. So we're hoping to see many parents that will be there as well and families.
Lois, SAU 21's doing a new match of parent to mentor. They just announced it, where they're going to match mentors with parents, if parents want a one-on-one help. Did they offer it to us too, or are they just keeping that to SAU 21?
I'm going to say that's SAU 21 initiative. We have not heard about that.
Okay.
Yep.
It's a great thing, so I'm just wondering if we could somehow find out how it went, because it's a great program. The parents are going to be paired for four or five months. And so I think it would be a great program if we could do it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Is that with Patrice Baker?
No.
Do we know who it's, who's overseeing it?
The superintendent announced it.
I will hopefully see Meredith on Thursday. She's got a big week coming up. She is defending her dissertation tomorrow, so she's got a big week coming up. But I will be in touch with her after she does that, and that's off her plate. But I'll ask her about it, absolutely. You see that Sarah Fillion continues to meet with Hampton Academy. They have another date scheduled in April, which is great. You noted that there were several of us that got to attend the ASCD conference, which was fantastic. Obviously, this summer, we're hosting our extended school year, which will be in July. We have language arts and math work that continues. And I think that's really it, unless there's something specific you want to pull and discuss. Obviously, New Hampshire SAS is going to take place right now. We're busy with that. Just hard to believe, it's April and things are winding down, third trimester. Yep.
Okey-dokey, let's see. Do we want to talk about federal assurances for grants?
Yes.
Ready?
Yep. So every year at this time, we have to upload the federal assurances, which basically ensures that the school board and the superintendent are ensuring that the guidelines for federal grants are followed. So you'll see that there is a packet that I've given you that you basically have to initial to ensure that we are following all processes and procedures, and that does get uploaded. It becomes part of our minutes, and it becomes part of the Department of Ed's documents. So it's a lengthy document that we just have to initial and make sure that we, that's the one?
There you go.
Thank you very much. Great. And that just has to be part of our minutes. Terrific. Thank you.
I would say, we don't have oratorical kids here. I would say, do we want to try to see if they want to come back next month, if they can make it? Yes? No? Yeah. We can try, we can try again if they are available next month. I think everybody always enjoys that, and they work so hard on it. We want to make sure they. always enjoys that, and they work so hard on it. We wanna make sure they get their recognition.
I'd just quick acknowledge our assistant principals, who have worked really hard, and we're glad that they had their special week, and as I said, we really thank you for all you do and all the support you give, not only the principals, but especially the kids. And also, I'd like to give a shout-out to all of our administrative assistants, because we won't be meeting again until after Administrative Assistance Day, and again, without them, we would be nowhere. They help us so much, so shout-out to all of them.
Thank you for doing that. All right, thank you. Now we can upload it.
Mrs. Curtis?
Okay, so I have March's statement on our financials. I have the food service financials and the grants enclosed. Keith went over some of the bidding that we've been going through. We have a lot of projects coming up that we're trying to clean up with Warren Article monies and problems that have arisen. So just paying attention to our budget and trying to keep it aligned, I was working with how are we going to correct and have enough funds for the special ed deficit? And so I worked with... With the auditors and with one of our lawyers to make sure that it was okay to be able to ask for permission to utilize the special education aid. And what that is, it's a percentage of expenditures from special ed from the prior year that we have to pull all the expenditures, have a doctor sign off on them, and we get a percentage of that money back. And it's a guesstimate amount, but I put in a revenue for our MS-24, which offsets our taxes when they do tax, because it's a year earlier than we actually get it. So I put in an amount of money. Well, we had received more money than what I guesstimated on the MS-24, so those would normally come in as CAD aid revenues, and you would see that money normally in the fund balance at the end of the year, because I don't ever touch it, but because special ed is... Is in a lot of extra expenditures that we weren't expecting, especially in tuition and transportation, that I could have you take the difference, accept it as revenue, and accept it to be spent as special ed... Spent for special ed expenditures. So the difference is... So our check that we received was $302,473. What I estimated on the MS-24 was $200,000. So the difference is $102,473. So I'm asking you to accept that revenue for us to be able to spend it for special ed expenditures.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept that amount of money and use it toward the special ed expenditures.
For a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
So the one other big check that I have that I would like permission to accept and spend the donation... Well, it's not a donation. It's a refund check. So last year, in our fiscal '22, '23 year, we gave Dunrin Hall a deposit check for... They were supposed to start the HVAC project at Center School, and when they... And so we gave them a deposit check. They were gonna start in June, but prior to June, they went in to test and check where they were gonna put the piping and how they were gonna set it up, and when they did that, they found asbestos. And so the project got stopped. They did not, unfortunately, have somebody at that time that could help us with asbestos, so we completely stopped that project for the summer. We had to find somebody that could help us with that, because they didn't have somebody at the time. So we did an RFP for asbestos. We just got that in. And then on top of that, we... They weren't sure because of the rest of the HVAC money was gonna come out of the Esser Fund and two of the Warren Articles, and they... We weren't sure if they were gonna get it done, since we had a stop in June, to be able to complete the project this September, when Esser Fund was completed. So we had to completely stop that project and hope that the Warren Article passed. Well, the Warren Article did pass. However, they decided to back out of the project, because they did not... They were not sure that they would have the time this year to help us with the project. They had too many projects of their own going on, so they decided to pull back from that project. So they refunded us the deposit check. So what I'm asking is to accept that deposit check back and as revenue, and to expend that refund check with the asbestos that we didn't plan on having in our budget. So to utilize the funds for that, and then to utilize the rest of the funds for the boiler. I don't know what that's going to be yet, but that was the Marston boiler that we did not realize was gonna break down and we need to replace. And then if there are any funds after those two items are completed, I would like to utilize the rest if I still need it for special education. I don't think I'm going to, but I'm just throwing it out there in case. And then any of the rest of the revenues would go to the fund balance at the end of the year. That's a lot, so ask questions.
I would make that motion, as you explained it, to accept this check for $276,197 to be used as you explained it.
Yeah. I would have a breakdown of everything for backup. Yep.
I'll second that.
So what I would do is I would... Because I'm a little OCD, I would take this copy of the check. I take the minutes that you accepted to expend it, and then I back it up with all of the invoices for those items into a separate account, and I have it all backed up for the auditors. So... But yeah, it would be exactly for that, and then anything else would go to fund balance.
Back up a minute.
Mm-hmm.
What happened with the asbestos?
So we didn't expect to have it.
I understand, so...
Right, so it's way up in the ceiling, and they're in the ceiling tile, so if you don't... You have the money?
We have the money for it.
Okay.
And they... You've just put out a new RFP for it, right?
Just got a little confusing there for a minute.
So this was gonna... This is gonna cover that? Yep.
No.
I thought you meant like... Where is it?
Sorry, I just... I lost that in the translation.
Nope, I got it.
Yeah, we're trying to cover like... Yeah.
That's all right, as long as you assure me that we have the money and it will be taken care of.
Yeah, we want it taken care of.
Good.
So that was... And I only have one more check.
So we just didn't vote on it?
Oh, you didn't vote on it.
No, we just talked about it. All in favor? Okay. Four zero?
Perfect. And then the last check is for donation for food service from the First Congregational Church in the amount of $468.27, and it is to help assist families in the need for food service.
So we only need $4,500 more.
I'll make a motion to accept that check to be used to help assistance with families in need.
In need.
Second, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
So once I... Keith and I get all the RFPs and the bids, and we'll have more of an idea where... How much everything is gonna be. I'll break it all down and give you an estimate, but yeah, it's gonna start getting near close to the end, and I will start breaking down a lot more of the big details for you. Oh, listen, what else? Let me tell you one more thing I'm doing. I've already rolled the year over for next year, so next year's system's rolled over. We... I'm starting contracts for the teachers, so my goal is by next Friday to have teacher contracts out before they go on vacation. I did get health insurance information. We... So the rate is what they suggest they thought it was gonna be, so it's 14.2%. And so we're already like starting next year already, so... Yeah, fun times. So trying to clean up this year and start in next year.
What was the GMR that we got?
14.2, so it was exactly the GMR. Yep. Yep.
Could've been worse. We heard about schools that were in the twenties.
Oh, in the 20% thirty's.
We weren't bad.
Yeah.
Wasn't bad. Wasn't great.
Not great.
Wasn't bad.
Ready for resignations and nominations?
Yes. So in your packet, you have Chris Strong's letter.
Yeah.
I would move to accept Chris Strong's letter of resignation.
Retirement.
Retirement.
Twenty-six years.
Twenty-six years of retirement.
Yes.
With regret, with regret.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Thank you. And then also in your packet is a... I'd like to nominate Brian Gray, who will be replacing Sue McNichol as our technology teacher. You can take a look at his qualifications. I'm really excited about this candidate. I know that Amber Levine is as well. I think he is going to really help us to move along some of the initiatives that we have going, while also maintaining some of the great things that are already there. So I'm very... We're very excited about Brian Gray.
Make a motion to accept Brian Gray as replacement for Sue McNichol, although no one can ever replace Sue.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
You. Policies. I realized I gave everybody that, and I didn't have it. So we, during our... No, I'll drop Molly, because she's on here. So on the snow day, some of us decided to have a policy meeting. So Wendy, myself, Ryan, Dr. Joinus, were part of it, and Molly St. Jean joined us. And by the way, I have a nice, fresh copy of the reorganizations, so that you have those as well, so we can pass those out. So we got together to take a look at two sections of the policy.
Thank you.
Because in our efforts to make sure that we're keeping our policies up to date, we looked specifically at sections D and E. You can see that DFDA is the crowdfunding. That's a new policy that is based on things like GoFundMe and Donors Choose. So that's a new policy. It's pretty lengthy, five pages, right? And you can see it is connected to policy KCD, which is another one of our policies that we have in place. And you can see that anything up to $500, in excess of $500, has to be approved by the principal, and anything with dollar value up to $2,500 needs to go through me. So that's probably something that, just to be aware of. You want me to go through them and just kinda highlight the revisions for you? Would that be helpful?
If anybody wants to. So these are all of First Street.
Yeah, they are all are, and you can see policy DKA, which is payroll procedures. You can see the changes in red. It's just been a revision. Expense reimbursement, DKC. You can see that we've put some language in this, only because we thought it would be helpful for clarification. So in addition to... This is an optional one. In addition to the detailed information, we also updated DKCR, which is really the guidelines. And then we actually have a form that we came up with, only because we thought it would be just a clearer way to communicate, which is attached to our request for reimbursements, which we've always had. So just making it pretty clear about expenditures with our conferences that are out of state. And that's really D, so just new guidelines, new form. And then section E is a... EBB is a priority, and this is around safety procedures. And you can see the current one is a one-pager, but the new one is actually three pages. And you can see there's a lot more that has been added since this was updated in 2010. So this is 14 years old. So you can see things like emergency operation plans that all principals have to submit to the state by October 15th. That's included in there. The sports injury emergency action plan, that's in there with concussions, right? The communication plan, the school bus safety program. So all of that is now rolled into the school safety program, and it is a priority.
And these are all things that we've updated over the last year or so. It's just kinda gathering them all together.
Yep, kinda pulling them together. And then the EBBB, which is accident reports. You can see the current one, and then you can see the revised ones. We made some minor changes, but not a lot, as we look through them. And then the other one is EBCB, which is revision, and you can see that that one has some revision there, right? It's that one-page document, and it is recommended. And then, of course, EBCC, which was specific to bomb threats, but now it includes false alarms, active shooter, and other such threats. So you can see it's again, it's changed since 2010 in light of the times, and this is also a recommended policy as well. And then the last one... I'm sorry, there's two more. EC, which is building grounds and management. And you can see there's been some language added to that, specifically that we will develop a 20-year maintenance plan, as required by the statute, in the event that we were to receive money from state school building aid program. We just have to have a 20-year plan. And then the last but not least is under food service management, which is also recommended, and you can see that there's been a paragraph added to the bottom of that as well, ensuring that students have access to school-provided meals, regardless of ability to pay for such meal. So you can see it's kind of now in that... In that policy that is based on legal references.
Building and grounds management. Why did you take that in conjunction with the facilities manager?
That was the recommendation from the New Hampshire School Boards Association. I think in the first paragraph, you've got the superintendent, and you know that I'm going to work collaboratively with our facilities manager and our building principals. You know, we can. We can keep it if you so choose. Really just our preference. I think we were just trying to be in line with New Hampshire School Boards Association. I don't know. Wendy, do you wanna?
I did think it was weird, to be fair.
What?
I thought it was weird, to be fair.
I thought it was weird, to be fair.
Yeah.
When we looked at it.
Yeah.
I mean, it's kind of the way it came to us. But I mean, that's why we have that position.
Right.
Is to...
Yeah. We can keep it. I mean, as if... We can make the change.
I would kind of... I feel like you should...
We should.
I know.
Building and grounds management. He's the facilities manager.
That is that person's responsibility.
Yep.
I think it should be left in there.
I would be happy to leave it out. Just me.
Does anybody else? We can leave it. All right, we'll keep it. That's why we do these first and second reads. Are you okay with that, Les and Jenny? All right. All right. Perfect. That's why we get to... When we have time, we get to do that, right? So thank you. Appreciate it. We will make sure that we make the changes.
Are we ready to talk about minutes?
And this is first read, right?
Yes, it is.
Yes, first read. So we'll look at those again next month.
Page 65.
Hold on. Are we looking at the minutes of March 19?
Yes, we are.
Okay. There's a... I think it's a typo, and I can see how it could have happened. But down underneath... Sorry, the fourth one up where it says C negotiations.
On page 65?
Oh, I'm on page 60.
You're on the... Yes.
I'm sorry. I'm on page 61.
Okay. I'll get it.
So does everybody see the fourth one up where it says?
Yep.
All right. Underneath that one, it says assessment negotiations. And I think that should be CESP.
And actually, and I think both of those were Les and Jenny, right?
Yep.
Yep. So a second change. So C negotiations should be Mr. Shepherd and Mrs. Bridle, and then change assessment to CESP. Yep.
And the only other thing that I was a little unclear of, if I can find it... I can't find it.
Page 65. Right where it says motion to move... Motion to move the school board meeting to June 18th, not the last day of school.
Oh, yes. That's important.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, I found it. I knew I had one. Page 66. About a third of the way down, after it has 11, two nominations. Okay? The next bold-faced item says... Actually, right underneath that says, "Discussion on Protocol Around Nominations and Acceptance."
If I remember right, that was me asking questions about how we were doing it, right? Because I didn't know what we were doing.
Yeah.
I think it was clarification for me, I believe, was the discussion on protocol.
Yep.
I'm just thinking there should be a little more in there. Yeah, we had a discussion. Did we discuss notifying people who did not get a nomination? Or is that just in my mind from...
We discussed that.
We discussed that.
Oh, okay. All right. I didn't know if there should be more there. Maybe she can just review the tape.
All right. Okay. I can put a note.
And just clarify. So do we want to hold on to these until we get a... Yep. So we will revisit these next month. Okay. So next is minutes of non-public, also from March 19.
This is page 69?
Yep, page 69.
So this is number one?
Yes.
I would move that.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. So the second issue, number two, non-public, March 19.
This is page 71?
Yep, page 71.
I'll make a motion to accept those.
Second.
Okay. So we have some things. Let's see. I'm sorry. Do we have anyone here for continuation of public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to call public comment closed for the night.
I would...
Go ahead.
I would like to ask Amy Murphy, because I see her sitting there. Just do you have any idea of the timeline for negotiations? Great. Thank you. I'm sorry? Yes.
Okay. I assume we have things to discuss in non-public?
I think it's under RSA 91A. Oh, actually, no. It's RSA 91A32.
I second it.
Okay. Roll call. Les?
Hi.
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 Okay.
We better...
All right.
I would make a motion that we come out a non-public session. And no, no. I would make a motion that we adjourn.
All in favor? Let's go.